If you are here, it is because you are a trauma-informed approach nerd. In all the best ways and you want to get your study on, you wanna learn and get your fingertips nuanced with. That is a very funny sentence, but you do wanna get your fingertips nuanced with the new guide that Sam's just put out in twenty twenty-three. A guide to trauma-informed approaches and it is the updated guide from the twenty fourteen guide that many of us cite frequently. So we're going to be focusing on what is it meant to be trauma-informed and what might we need it to be? And I will just say that part two is really focused on me doing some overview of what the guide is. So that we can all be in shared language, we can all be in shared language, which is the primary move of creating a trauma-informed community. And so that when I say trauma-informed and you say trauma-informed, we know a little bit about where we're coming from. So that we can walk alongside each other and not again walk at each other or collide. So we're gonna be creating some shared language. And then the a really special part of part two will be Matthew who's. Former elementary school that Matthew led is highlighted in the practical guide. As a beautiful example of what this work can look like in reality, both all the challenges, trials, tribulations and celebrations. So Matthew will be sharing out a little bit of his leadership. Reflections, grapplings, wonderings of what, okay, all these nice words printed on beautiful paper and here's what it can look like in reality. So let's take a moment before we get into the guide, let's take a moment to think about where we are in this moment of time. In the trauma-informed movement initiative in the work with a capital W. The reminder is that this whole approach, this whole idea, this language that we've been using called trauma-informed. We really wanna pay homage to the folks who particularly have roots in domestic violence prevention. And in women shelters in the nineteen nineties, who were working with a service population. And really fully understood that in order to support the folks who were coming to shelters or who were experiencing domestic violence. Now we say interpersonal violence, but we're experiencing DV in the nineties. That the system and services themselves, the forms that they were using, the questions they were asking. Needed to be altered, shifted and and changed. And so I I always, particularly those of us in education, myself and and many of you. I really wanna root us in the lineage of where this came from. In the nineteen nineties, that's where we kind of saw the work of trauma-informed start to appear. And then other spaces and fields and industries adapt and adopt it. And then for us in the world of education, we've really started to have a lot of momentum around acknowledging. Realizing, acknowledging, and then being comfortable with even using the word trauma and trauma-informed in our ed spaces, really in the two thousands. And in the last couple of years, we know now that to say trauma-informed is kind of. A comfortable saying for many of us, and in some places, I wanna acknowledge that it's not actually a cultural fit and we might use brain-based. Brain-based leadership or brain science or other terminology so that the word trauma doesn't catch people off guard. But this idea, the main idea. That in order for us to move through the world to work with people and not at people. The way that we can most make impact in our approaches and how we arrive at a conversation. At a leadership move at a decision. With the understanding that there are a lot of people walking around the world with hurt or pain or harm. And that is either at the present or it is just informing what folks are already listening for. And that if we arrive at the work with that knowing, but we might be softer. We might have more attunement into our own nervous systems and into theirs. And that we can actually create a collective nervous system together that is attuned into not just behavior. But feeling and then most importantly, unmet need and that that is informing what we're seeing on the surface level and with whom we work. And who we serve and our young people and those we work with in ed systems. In your work, what is it meant to be trauma-informed? Okay, we've got folks saying sensitive to others' lived experience, so it's also often stressful, check. The practice of holding space, that means offering someone radical witnessing, not necessarily intervening, correcting. Or giving advice, but actually saying, I see you and I hear you. Aware of others' experience and how it impacts their behavior, that's right, so again, that kind of. I'm getting, moving from behavior language into feeling language and then most importantly into unmet need language. And how to best support students with a variety of experiences. I read books like What Happened to You and I understand it to be recognizing we may not be aware of other experiences or triggers. Yeah, we never know what someone's walking in the room with. And then we've got folks who are have gotten some training and we see the the purpose of building relationships and trust. Thank you, thank you. I'm curious if there's anyone else who maybe didn't wanna answer in the mentor meter but would like to offer. Your thoughts around in your work, what is it meant to be trauma-informed in chat, I just wanna give a moment. To see if that we can get any other layers to this work. Being aware of the cultural historical trauma that's passed down. Beautiful and how it's impacted the current traumatic life experiences of my community. Being conscious of the trauma history that a student has been through in order to plan intervention strategies. Understanding young people's behavior in context. Lovely, training from UCSF staff, most likely Joyce Dorado, Martha Merchant at Hartz. Trainings, relationships, modify responses, listen more carefully and to give others time to hold space. We're hearing this idea of holding space come up a lot and Heather Platt is someone who kind of coined that term. And writes a lot about the art of holding space. Trauma-informed can mean continuous learning and self-reflection and understanding systems and how it impacts groups and individuals. This is so beautiful, everyone, offering community members resources and a listening ear and what they need rather than what we think they need. Creating supportive environments for students impacted by trauma and we're hearing ways to do that. We're gonna go to the second question. And the second question is, if we think about in this moment, what if we imagine SAMSA releasing a guide? Or all of us authoring a guide in ten years? What will we have moved, where will we have moved the trauma-informed work in ten years? Where do we need the industry or the field or the languaging of what it means to be trauma-informed, where do we need it to go and move? So it's the same exact mentee link and now you should get a second prompt. You should get a second prompt, what might you need trauma-informed approaches to mean? And I wanna offer two second questions, what do our students need it to mean for us? And what do we as staff, school staff and leaders need it to mean? So for example, maybe all of our students are saying, I want you to stop using the word traumatized. Maybe I just want you to say, I I live through the world, I'm not traumatized, but I live through the world, I'm giving an example. And I had a student who once said, please stop using the word traumatized. So let's get some of your thoughts in and I'm gonna start reading them out as Ingrid's pulling them up. What might it mean when we look ahead? A community of care and support. Universal strategies that can be implemented at tier one level, right, so tier one is universal, so what do we all agree with? No matter what, no matter who, all of us are going to get. Students need it to mean understanding and patience, we know that our school systems and our school mental health systems are patient. Patience strained often. More understanding of neurodivergence and those who may not be diagnosed and under recognizing disability and invisible disabilities. Bold italicized, whoever wrote that, please private message me, cuz I wanna create a whole strand of programming. On neurodiversity, I'm such, I'm learning about ableism in my body and in our work and and believe that it's. Under underspoken about, so thank you for naming that. Trauma-informed work takes the priority in education rather than being an afterthought. Okay, I'm gonna read this one, I hope that we're more open to allowing the workforce to rest. Less push for product and openness to rest. Beautiful. Okay, these are so brilliant and bold, thank you. They need us to not re-traumatize them and offer a safe space for themselves and grow into what they wanna be. And to look at it and understand trauma and implement it to all parts of society, lovely, okay. And I'm gonna read the last one, actual policy changes which align with current science, repair. Reparations and healing through policy, practice and strategy, I could not agree more. Ah, I'm so, I feel really energized by all of these. Orientation towards patience and justice within cultural languages, lovely. So let's then roll up our sleeves with what's new in the guide and if you haven't checked out the guide yet, all good, that's what today is for. So please feel free to to kind of take your own rest. Cuz this is our study session, so back in twenty fourteen, SAMSA, our funder, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. Codified what this trauma-informed approach can look like generally in the work, in the behavioral health workforce. And those of us in school mental health, then we had to kind of contextualize it for our for our work. And almost then ten years later, SAMSA returned to this visit, okay, what now? What did we miss ten years ago, what has the field been demanding grassroots up? And what now are we more firm in our stance and might need to add? So here's a couple high level, and then when you get your groups, you might learn more, so high level, here's the twenty twenty-three update. A trauma-informed approach. There is specific call-in language to center the value, vision and voices of those with lived experience in the guide. So it means that if we're talking the talk about trauma-informed, we cannot ignore and we cannot underskill ourselves. With what it means to center value and work with folks who are living with mental health or behavioral health experiences. Or trauma experiences. There's also a specific bold and concentration on the social determinants of health, which is a shift from twenty fourteen. It's a pretty clear acknowledgement that it is not trauma-informed, does not just mean an individual student. Or an individual person or individual staff member, it actually requires us in the work. To get really clear and rooted in the social constructions of access and inaccess. Of the social constructions of of and operations of oppression across lines of body, of identity. And again, like I said, of who is valued, whose bodies are valued and whose bodies are invalidated in our work. And there's also a specific focus on post-traumatic stress disorder and I know many of you might be part of the work who say there's no such thing as post-traumatic stress disorder. But there might be post-traumatic stress, it's not a disorder, it's just a way of living, that's a whole other conversation we should be in. But I'm mentioning that there's many of us who might have grapplings with the term post-traumatic stress disorder and yet still it's included in the guide. Okay, and then two more pieces. There's also a specific note, and I wanna say this very clearly. A specific note on the socio-ecological model, that trauma is nested in concentric circles and operationalizes in concentric circles. So too does resilience and healing and repair. And that there is very specific language that acknowledges. Race racism-based trauma, we don't use race-based, but racism as in the power over. Power and operationalizing of racism, racism-based trauma, sexual assault, homophobia. Interpersonal violence and traumas related to refugee experiences and that is something for us if we're feeling like, oh, my workplace. Talks about being trauma-informed, but actually we get a little bit squirmy when we talk about oppression. What a beautiful way to start to call in folks and say, we're being invited to really take a stance and get more skilled when it comes to. Conversations that may seem separate from being trauma-informed but are actually quite central. And then the last is that there are specific goals of this guide, one is to provide strategies, which we'll get to in our study session. We'll hear from Matthew, based on the original, based on the original concept. And then the second is this encouragement for leadership. School-side administrators, system leaders, and folks who've got policy. Influence to really adapt trauma-informed approaches at the organizational level. And at the very end of the stack, you'll see a lot of resources that could help you get there and I'm gonna be mentioning that too. If you get into the organizational assessment study group, that's another way. Because the guide is also structured in focusing on principles and the domains and then offering resources and case studies. So Matthew may cue you in about five minutes to come on, I'm gonna need about five minutes, is that cool, yeah, he's like, keep going, okay, great. Great, okay. So many of you already named this, I'm I'm doing this again for a baseline of shared language. That when we say what a trauma-informed approach can actually mean, it's again, this is not new. This is connected to what SAMSA published in twenty fourteen, that it is a call-in about the realization, aha, trauma exists. Both either within me, because of me. Or within us, recognizes what trauma might show up like in our behavior, in our speech. In our body language, in our needs. I'm gonna again cue our colleague who really called us in in terms of neurodivergence. Because there's a lot of new research and writing about how many of us who come from an ableist lens misread. Body language from our students as trauma, but it's actually a different, a diverse way of expressing need. So we need to get actually much more nuanced in the recognizing space. And in the response, okay, so now that we know all these things, then how are we actually changing the way that we do business? And then resisting re-traumatization and I wanna name this. With deep kindness for myself and all of us. We will ouch. We will ouch, some of us think that living in a trauma-informed approach always means that we're always, there's harmony always, that there's never conflict. And I just wanna say that we will ouch, that's part about being human, it's part about working in our school structures and systems. The work of being trauma-informed is that we then have the skills to say oops. And just like our colleague mentioned earlier, that we have the skills and commitment to repair. Ouch and oops. Ouch and oops. So again, trauma-informed approach, where does this land then in the spectrum? So some of us are clinicians and we're service providers and we are all about the trauma treatment. We're about that tier three, maybe we're nuanced in EMDR, maybe we are trained in. In CBT, right, or dialectical behavioral therapy. Sidebar, not all trauma treatments are trauma-informed, so that's another thing to have us uphold in our study sessions. But that trauma treatment is really that kind of that intervention. We're moving back, 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 up to that worldview, that belief system, that eagle. Soaring over approach to this work, either to your own relationship to the work, your own self, your leadership or your system. So that's what we're talking about when we say approaches, if any of you are getting like itchy and say, but I wanna talk about services. That's beautiful and that's a connected conversation in our series and we'll we'll see some other ways that we can show up in. As trauma-informed care approaches and treatments in this series, today we're focusing on the first step. Included, included.
Trauma-informed and resilience-oriented implementation is not a program model that can be implemented. And then simply monitored by a fidelity checklist. Rather, it is a profound paradigm shift in knowledge, perspective, attitudes and skills. That continue to deepen and unfold over time.
Thank you, beautiful. So the the hope that I'm offering from this quote is that for any of us who say, oh, I am trauma. Or I'm gonna get trauma-informed or that is not trauma-informed, I just wanna offer. That it is. A way of being. And a way of doing, but more so a way of being, right, and so we can't necessarily assess ourselves as humans if we're trauma-informed. In in the most perfect way, because again, it we will never be perfect. Part about being trauma-informed is knowing that we are moving and shape-shifting all the time and that the needs in ourselves and those around us are moving and shape-shifting all the time. Because we are constantly in a space of both navigating injury, understanding harm. And moving towards and through healing, hopefully with each other. So I'm gonna focus on that sentence of perspective, attitudes and skills that deepens and unfolds over time. Just because you go to one training or I went to this one webinar, doesn't mean my learning has stopped, it means it was just one node. In the vertebra of my trauma-informed journey. And I guess I just said vertebra of my trauma-informed journey, quote, okay. Last but not least, before we move and we hear from Matthew. I wanna talk a little bit about the foundation of this work, which is being culturally humble. And in the guide, it is very clear that you can say all the principles you want, safety, voice, choice, collaboration, mutuality, trustworthiness. And all the domains, physical environment, financing. Collaborate across systems. And if culturally cultural humility is missing within your practice and the practice of those that you're collaborating with, then what are we doing? What are we doing? So I wanna back up and say, if you are doing work around cultural humility, you are doing trauma-informed. Trauma-informed work and trauma approached work and as our colleague Homer Paul says. It's if it's not racially just, it's not trauma-informed, punto. So we're gonna take a moment and just do a a quick reflection and actually, I know we're not gonna go to mentor meter, we're going to go. Into the chat box and I just wanna take a moment to reflect as the foundation before we hear from Matthew and we move into our small groups, which is this. If cultural humility is the foundation to any trauma-informed approach. How might we commit in our school mental health championship work, whatever that means to us? The lifelong commitment to self-evaluation and self-critique. The ability to say ouch and oops within ourselves, the recognition of power dynamics and imbalances and then the commitment to fix them. So there are two questions that I wanna offer you. As either today or beyond today, that can kind of serve as your essential questions as you, as we deepen our trauma-informed and and paradigm shifts. When we, when we do not know something, are we able to say that we do not know? And what does your commitment to interrogating, examining and addressing power inequities and imbalances? In ourselves and individuals in our school mental health systems look like, feel like and sound like? So I just wanna offer those two questions and then ask you for a brave moment of peer accountability to in the chat. If question one is when we do not know something? And then question two is what does our commitment to interrogating, right, one, two? You don't just offer. Which question do you want to hold on to for your own practice, you can say. I wanna learn how to say, when I don't know something, I wanna learn how to say that, I wanna I wanna grow there. Or I wanna grow in my commitment to interrogating power and equity. So I just wanna take a moment, either you can write it down for yourself, what might be your own personal accountability move in this moment? For where your cultural humility work needs to grow. So I'll I'll offer that publicly. And I know that my work always in my position of power and my roles of power. I need to continue my commitment to interrogating and examining power dynamics, power inequities. Yeah, great, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'm with you. Question two, okay. Yeah, and what that looks like and feels like and sounds like. Okay, we've got a lot of folks in question too, so maybe that's a whole other session and I'd be down with that, I'd be down with that, okay. So you have the deck and I will send you this deck, but I have this that question, that second question, I have that written on a post-it. That's right up here on my monitor, so that it calls me into culturally humble accountability. You, many of you know this, but the work of trauma-informed approach is held both in the principles and in domains. So principles are the way of being and domains are the containers by which the ways of being come alive. So in the bold on the left are those principles that are in the guide. But I also wanna offer that the trauma-informed Oregon and the link is at the bottom. Offers a couple other principles that I personally think are really helpful in addition. Like resilience and strength-based approach, like lifelong learning and making sure that inclusiveness and shared purpose is named in the principles. For those of you who want to get to learn, want to learn more about the principles, I recommend you going to room one in your study session. Yeah, oh, that's such a beautiful sentence, we practice interrogating power and equity by normalizing this interrogation, amen, amen. Okay, and then in terms of the domains, if we are looking at a systems analysis, we want to see the trauma-informed approach work live. Everywhere in the garden, not just with the tomatoes, but the whole garden. Many of us think, oh, trauma-informed approach is just in the school counselor's office, no, it's the whole kit and caboodle, the whole environment across the domains. I'm gonna hand it to Matthew. Matthew on page thirty-four and thirty-five of the guide and many of you know Matthew Portell because you're part of the trauma-informed educators network. Or you're part of Paces Connection, or you're just a fan of Matthew Portell, which many of us are. And not about you as a as a cultural personality necessarily, Matthew, but as someone who is incredibly committed to this work. And incredibly committed to being a lifelong learner and most beautifully incredible incredibly committed to sharing reflection and learning. And so Matthew and and his work is highlighted in the guide and we invited him to come and share what the work looked like as a school principal. In the grappling and then after we hear from Matthew, we'll move into small group, so without further ado, thank you, Matthew.
Thank you and I I appreciate the opportunity and. The fact that I was even asked by SAMSA to be a part of this. Was mind-blowing to me because I used the first guide as a guide for the work that we were trying to do. Because I learned about all of this work really right after the guide came out, just out of two thousand fifteen, when it came out in two thousand fourteen. But I wanna start by saying you said so much and I just wanna. I I I I was just, I was shaking my head and and fist bumping and all of the stuff. Because I think one thing that I I would encourage any educators, this work starts with us. It really doesn't have anything to do with kids necessarily to begin with. And I had that wrong, I was initially trying to fix what I perceived as broken kids, right? And this is just in full transparency where that saviorism had kicked in a little bit, where I'm here to help and save kids. When really I had a lot of work to do myself, not just as a school principal, not as an educator, but as a human. And so I thought this work was about everybody else but me at the beginning. And that quickly became recognizable that that was not the case, that this was about me and the systems in which I work. So I would also say that this work, again, what you said is with, not to. It, as a school administrator, I didn't do it to the staff, I didn't, we didn't do professional development to the staff, we did things with. The the staff were a part of the whole process, without them, this work would never have been accomplished at all. Without their buy-in, people say, how do you get buy-in? The way I got buy-in with the staff is I treated them how I wanted them to treat the students. So we had mantras, one of them was pre-forgiven. And it was goes back to what you said about we're gonna make mistakes, right? That doesn't mean that we don't acknowledge them, that doesn't mean that we don't problem solve them. And sometimes it doesn't mean that there's outcomes that we don't intend. But we prefer, I pre-for gave and I learned that I had to model. And if I were to turn my computer, right over there is my mission, my personal mission statement that has had all kinds of. Adoptions over my career of the last sixteen seventeen years. But. I was leaving something out of that and my mission statement used to say, and this is the old one, I think it's awesome that it's up there, that my my mission is to motivate, lead, educate. Inspires others to be their best, not realizing that it was really, I left myself out. And so what I realized too is it's not about others, it's about me and when I'm not taking care of myself and I'm not inspired as a leader. It absolutely impacts the culture of the school, so that's the key. But the practice is, I'm not gonna go through all we did cuz it's in that, it's in the, it's in the document. But I just wanna say one thing, humanize. It's all about humanizing ourselves, each other, the kids, the parents, the teachers. It's seeing people, seeking first to understand then to be understood, really showing up, somebody said, holding space. I didn't know what that meant when I started this work, but I quickly learned what it meant. And it simply meant mean to me, seek first to understand then to be understood, just listen with my heart and my head. and my head. Not just my head, not trying to think of what I'm gonna do to solve this problem, not what I'm gonna think about, what I'm gonna say, but just listen with my heart first and then my head. Ultimately, that guided us to all the practices that you'll read about in the guide. Um, which was utilizing current science, right? That education part. Uh, looking at those six principles, we really did began to look at all of them, safety. We didn't know that our kids didn't feel safe because we never asked them. One of the strategies we did was we surveyed our students to find out what they felt. Trustworthiness and transparency, pre-forgiven was part of that. When I made a mistake, I admitted it. Or if I had a problem that I needed so solved, I brought it to the leadership team or I brought it to the staff. Um, when things weren't going well, we acknowledged it. When we didn't get things right, the aura, and that was very often. There is a, there is a linked video in here that when you said, oh, you know, when you're in the spaceship, we have, that's not trauma-informed, this isn't trauma-informed. I will acknowledge what we did in that video wasn't best practice. And I think part of this as an educator is we have to give ourselves pre forgiveness, but we also have to learn this is a journey. It is not a destination, is not a curriculum, is not something you're going to buy. It is a mindset. And so, looking at that video now, I show people and I'm like, yeah, that wasn't, we didn't have that right, but we started the journey. And let me tell you what we did once we figured out what we were doing that wasn't building safety and wasn't pre-retraumatizing and wasn't empowering. And so ultimately, all of that to say, um, as educators, we commonly get into this paradigm that the system is too big, it's too large, we can't do anything, and it can become very overwhelming. Here's what I want to tell educators. I was one educator with an idea, had no clue what we were doing at the beginning. And we just acted upon what we knew what was right, what we knew ethically what was right. And we made an impact. And it 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 was bigger than we could have ever imagined, but I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking about on the community, on the school, on the kids, on ourselves, um, on our parents, everybody was involved in this process. Um, and so this document, I think, if you look at the case study, and I know we don't have a lot of time, but you can always reach out to me. Um, and I also want to say, it's messy, complicated, hard work. People will try to sell this as something that's super easy. You just do this, you do that, everything's great. It's all unicorns and and sunshine and rainbows. Um, but it isn't. It's complex. Um, it takes like-minded people, whether they're in your school or out of their school, you have to find them. Which is why I started the Trauma-Informed Educators Network, because I needed that like-mindedness, because I didn't have it. And so, um, all that to say is, it's possible, it's dualable, it is hard. Um, being an educator is hard. We already do hard things. It's now, let's do hard things uh, backed in um, and what we know is to be true. Actually, there's one more thing. I also want to say I have learned that when you push against paradigms, a lot of times that has unintended consequences. Um, when we're talking about things like what I learned to be um, punishment, reward, Skinner's work, right? That's what we were taught in what I call teacher school. Kids have to have punishment and reward. When you begin to push against these poor paradigms that are rooted in our education system, um, it can get people a little um, uh, dysregulated, right? Um, what do you mean you're trying to do that? What do you mean you're gonna teach kids the power of breath and movement and mindfulness and connection and what do you mean you're gonna hire a social worker, a community mental health provider, a school counselor, and you're gonna be providing supports? Not just for the kids, but also for the parents and community. It's okay to be innovative and it's okay sometimes to have people look at you and go, I don't have any clue what you're trying to prove or do. Um, because uncomfortable is where we learn, comfortable is where we grow. Um, if you're not familiar with William Bridges' work about organizational change and the process of grief and what happens when change occurs within the context of a school, an organization. Um, I encourage you to look at it because I saw in myself and in all of parts of that socio-ecological model from individual kids all the way to the community and and even the district and systems, um, that it disrupted a little bit. Um, and that disruption was okay, and it was needed.
Thank you so much, Matthew. I think the piece that takes a lot of courage, especially in in the ed space, is the questioning behavioralism and questioning our relationship to control. And I think that ooh ah that I want to hold on to is also that for a lot of us, um, the shift to being trauma-informed actually requires a lot of expected and anticipated grief around change. There are a lot of folks who have said, well, I didn't get this, so I'm not gonna provide this. Um, and that's actually what it's, that's a a beautiful human response to being asked to show up and see humans differently.